Okay, this is the time where we have an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on our agenda. I've seen anyone, we'll move on. Does anybody have any objection to approval of agenda as written? Not hearing any, we'll accept the agenda as written. Consent agenda, without objection, we'll accept. Is there anything in the consent agenda that you wish to pull out or discuss? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved or accepted. Routine business, approval of claims. Moved in second to accept the claims, is that including the ones that are laying on our desk?
There was some corrections on your desk and then also the Department of Revenue claim packet was also sitting on your desk for approval.
Any question or discussion on the claim? Hearing none, call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Wyeth.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, department head reports. I see we have State's Attorney's Office, Clyde will be here later.
He'll just be here momentarily if you wanted to begin with someone else.
But somebody may have a short one, they afraid of getting ahead of Clyde?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We had South Dakota Office of Emergency Management visit me on 2/25. We had a drainage meeting on 2/25, which will be later in the agenda. I attended the city, Sinai City Council Meeting on March 2. House Bill 1201 has been passed by both houses, the House and the Senate, and will be sent to the Governor for his Senator. I did do some change in the word "shall" to "may" and we can discuss that at a later time, I presume. We've started getting our hazardous material supplies in and we'll be getting those out to the local fire departments. Count Plan Work Session was on March 4. We had a planning meeting on March 5. Our final planning meeting for Thursday's Tabletop Exercise was done last Thursday and I attended a township meeting at the Swift House Center. And last but not least, we do have a good exercise on Thursday over at the East Fire Station. Any questions?
And the registration time is 9:30?
9:30 to 10:00. The morning exercise is a natural disaster, the afternoon exercise is hazardous materials based.
Yeah, that'll be 12:30 to 1:00 registration and it's open?
No, there isn't, no, it starts at 12:30.
Yeah.
Rock and roll.
Oh, it starts at 12:30?
The afternoon session.
What if you were just going to the second part, the has, Matt?
It starts at 12:30.
But when do you register for that?
Well, when you walk in the door.
Oh, walk in the door, okay, very good. Well, we have two FEMA from Washington DC coming to...
And a contractor out of Arizona.
And a contractor, so...
And we got several, several county staff is going to be in attendance along the city and a lot of, lot of local companies.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll give your report next time.
Any other questions, Bob?
Thank you.
Okay, Clyde, we're ready for our State's Attorney report.
Morning.
Morning, Mr. Calhoun.
Well, I assume you've all had a chance to look over our statistics for 2014. That sets forth some of the work which we did during the last year. I don't know that there's really anything that stands out that much. The felony convictions were up quite a little. We had 123 felony convictions compared to 99 the year before. I don't know what is causing that. We do or did have a lot of felony drug convictions and that didn't account for all of it though, there were increase in about every, every category. The DWI felonies, I believe, were, were 11 and just a number of different felony offenses. Forty-eight of those that were convicted went to the penitentiary. I thought the new criminal law changes that were made went into effect in January of 2014 were, were supposed to cut down the number of people sent to the penitentiary, but it, it didn't here in Brookings County because in, I think, 2013, we had 30, 30-some that went to the penitentiary compared to 48. The number of Class 1 misdemeanors stayed about the same as did the Class 2 misdemeanors. The, the one category that was down overall was the total number of DWIs. That went down, I believe, from 227 to 186. The reason for that is that there were a number of DWI cases that we had to dismiss last year. The reason for that was the US Supreme Court in Missouri, McNeely versus Missouri, held that our implied consent statute where you had to give blood was unconstitutional. So, that caused a, a number of the DWI cases that had to be dismissed because the, the evidence was, was suppressed. The court system, the judges, the State's Attorney, I believe, have overcame that particular Supreme Court ruling. Probably the one that it affected the most is the Circuit Court Judges and Magistrate Court Judges who get calls of all hours of the night and day asking for a telephonic search warrant to withdraw the blood pursuant to search warrant. But we're, we're doing that and it's working fairly well, I think. How the Circuit Court Judges and Magistrate Court Judges are going to decide who has to take the calls, I guess that's, that's their problem. But that's the way it's being, being handled now. If a person doesn't consent, then we have to get a search warrant and it's done telephonically if, if it's at night. The domestic violence offenses, such as simple assault domestic, disorderly conduct domestic, believe those stayed about the same. There was 50 last year between the two, two categories. That doesn't seem to change and I don't know what, it just is a problem and I would say 98% of those domestics that we are called to and getting prosecuted, alcohol is involved and in many instances, there are children present and, but we prosecute them even though sometimes the victims don't want it prosecuted. But I think that's our obligation if the offense has been committed because if it isn't prosecuted, it'll just continue. Many instances, it continues even though we, we do prosecute, but, but we try and intervene. Underage consumptions of Class 2 misdemeanors, that was by far the greatest number, over That, they arrest them and we prosecute them. It is, it is against the law to drink alcohol if you're under 21 and as long as the laws there were, we will prosecute them. I think the one thing that our office is probably most proud of is that of all of those convictions that we had during 2014 and the 48 people that went to the penitentiary, we, we did not have a jury trial. And I think you're probably all aware that jury trials are expensive. Not having them certainly saves the county a lot of money and I don't think, well, I don't think the reason that we didn't have jury trials is because we're easy, because I don't think we are. And I think the defense attorneys will, will tell you that. So we, we do prosecute vigorously and, and I do think we try and do that which is, is right for both the state and the, and the defendants. And the other thing that I think we do a good job of, which is a benefit financially to the county, is that in 2014, we collected 42.7% of all of the court-appointed attorney's fees that were paid out by the county. That compares to a circuit average here in the Third Circuit of, I think it's 36%. For counties somewhat our size, Beetal County collects 32% of their court-appointed attorney's fees and Cottington is 37, so we, we work at it. Court Services and the Judge and the Magistrate, we all work towards getting the court-appointed attorney's fees repaid. Of course, the 48 individuals that went to the penitentiary, if they had court-appointed attorneys, it's going to be a while before those are collected, but still when they make parole, the parole agent tries to get some of the court-appointed attorney's fees back. That's kind of a summary and it's all set forth there in our, in our statistics for the year 2014 and we've compared it to, somewhat to the last five years and nothing seems to change too much, other than like you said, the DWIs are down for 2014, but we can thank the US Supreme Court for that. And Abby might comment on the juveniles. That's one of her main duties in addition to advising you, you, the Commission. Abby?
Again, you would have the report of the statistics for the juveniles in front of you and the numbers, I would point out, is just with the juveniles, we're seeing an increase. It's gradual, it's not a drastic increase, but our numbers do continue to go up as the years progress. We were up to 106 petitions filed this year. Our child in need of supervision petitions are down, but our delinquency offenses are up. So, that means there's more criminal offenses being committed by juveniles, but we're having less of the truancy or parental control issues that we've seen in the past. My numbers for teen court have increased as well. Last year, I referred 25 cases, this year, we were up to 34. And that's continued to be a successful program that we've been able to utilize as informal diversion. In terms of the abuse and neglect cases, our numbers there have stayed pretty consistent. In 2013, I had 15 active cases. In 2014, I had 14 active cases that involve 23 children. A difference this year, which does affect the workload on these cases, is that I did have three termination of parental rights cases and three ICWA cases or the Indian Child Welfare Act cases. And those have different parameters that are required, have different hearings. The termination of parental rights are often contested and so those end up being multiple day trials typically. So those do take a significant amount of work, but again, it is necessary that we do that. The trend we've seen in the offenses the past year has really been some issues with vandalism and criminal entry of vehicles this past summer. I think we heard a little bit about that in the news and we felt pretty successful that we were able to determine who the individuals involved were in most of those cases and bring them to justice and for most of these youths helping get back on the right track. So, that was a huge part of the caseload this summer, that we had an issue with that. Additionally, we had a number of violations of our sexting statute, so that's the dissemination of nude photos on an electronic device between juveniles. We should be, youth should be thankful to the legislature, I guess, for creating this statute because otherwise, it would be a violation of a child pornography statute. So we're able to take it from a felony offense to a misdemeanor because of this nature of the crime, but it is something we're seeing a rise in and it's something we treat very seriously in my office and amongst law enforcement. Other than that, a lot of the numbers are fairly consistent in terms of what the dispositions have been, how many youth remain on probation versus get committed to the Department of Corrections. Where I do think we will start to see changes will be in 2016. Mr. Calhoun referenced the Criminal Justice Reform Act that took place in 2013 and went to effect 2014. We're in the midst right now in the legislature of doing the same for juveniles, as I've discussed with you in the past, the Juvenile Justice Reform Act. And when that goes into effect in 2016, that will have a very serious impact in the way the juveniles are prosecuted in South Dakota. So it will be interesting to see how our numbers change at the end of 2016 and what impact that has. And then just briefly, I did include the involuntary mental commitment stats for you so you have them. Forty-five petitions were filed this year, so that means there were 45 commitments commenced and only 37 were ultimately approved by a qualified mental health professional and accepted for commitment. Last year, we were in the mid-30s, both in filing and actually committed. So it looks like the number that are commenced are up, but our number that are actually being sent to HSC is consistent with prior years. And beyond that, that's just a brief summary, but certainly available for questions.
Questions for the State's Attorney's Office. We end, oh yes.
I'd like to make is that you notice that in, in all of 2014, we had 123 felony convictions. Already, the first two months of this year, we've convicted 32 people of felonies. I don't know what's happening, but those are the numbers. I would also just like to say that, you know, we, Abby and I don't put in overtime or anything. Well, we, we put it in, but we don't, it doesn't matter. But Abby puts in a heck of a lot of, of extra time in these mental commitments and getting ready for things the Commission needs. So, we have a great deputy and I also would comment, the four legal assistants that I have, they do a heck of a job in getting all of this work out. We are going more electronic all the time, that's something that's kind of beyond me, but the assistants and Abby know how it's done, so, but it's, it's changing and getting less, getting more paperless all the time. Now, if there are any questions?
We end.
I just had a question, Clyde. 57% of those felony convictions last year were either the drug charges or a felony DWI. Is there any discussion going on for drug or alcohol court for Brookings County?
I think there is talk, not necessarily just for Brookings County, that there will be in the future something for, like the, the three large counties for Beetal and Cottington and Brookings. Not sure we would have sufficient numbers just for Brookings County, but there is discussion about that. I think our law train magistrate has been to meetings and that. We also have a Veterans Court and we have returned, referred one individual to Veterans Court, so it's coming.
Thank you.
Clyde, I would just like to say thank you for your efforts in collecting the court-appointed attorney's fees. That's huge for us and it's really, really important and, and on behalf of the taxpayers, thank you for your hard work in doing that.
We do what we can.
I've been on the Commission, Clyde, now a couple of years and a few months and I would say that the amount of workload that we are shoving over to your deputy has increased dramatically. We appreciate it.
I missed that.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much.
All right.
An excellent report and see you in a year.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Good morning and it's really hard to follow the State's Attorney, so. Well, in the last two weeks, the calls, we had 117 calls out, 113 calls in. We had 29 welfare recipients, or people asking about welfare benefits come in and we had 30 veterans come in. And I also did six home visits. For a home visit, usually it's going to be a veteran, I haven't done one yet for a welfare case, but it'll be a veteran who is homebound. The people I went out and saw this time were, one of them was in the nursing home, one was in the hospital, two were in assisted living and one was in his home in a hospital bed and unable to get out. And it happened to be one of the assisted livings had a little bonus because there was another widow of a veteran that, that was there that I got to stop in and see, see if Dorothy Croweville was doing okay, so. One of the things I kind of looked at was, was also dealing with the welfare report and I looked real quickly at that and just to just kind of give you guys a little bit of a understanding on that, when it says indigent by design, what that is, is someone who has either not actively pursued employment or an individual who has chosen like to go to school or some other thing and hadn't got the insurance through the school. And, and all of the institutes of higher education do have a, a program in there where they can get the insurance and that was set up with, actually with my predecessor Lionel and, and Mark Croweville both worked together on getting that, one of the state laws that are changed and so we're kind of thankful for that, so it's, it's helped reduce some of the numbers.
That's it? Thanks for Mike.
Yes.
There were a couple of the claims that were denied because people hadn't completed the application properly. What exactly is it, is it the same thing you're seeing over and over or what is it that is the problem?
Many, many times. On our application form, it, we go in, we get their name, social security number, date of birth, and then we get some background as far as employment, members in the, in the family and stuff. If, the whole process is, Irene will start off with getting a notice. They have seven days for, they have 15 days for an emergency to contact our office. At that point, when she gets the form, she will then send out a letter to that address. If we don't, if she doesn't hear anything in 30 days, she will then send out another letter and in two weeks, she sends out a certified letter. If the certified letter is returned or not claimed, okay, we have no way of contacting them to find out, do they have any assets, you know, are they employed, did they have insurance? And so failure to comply is either one, not getting the letter or receiving the letter and not coming in to respond to it.
So that large medical claim, there was a huge medical claim in there. And where they didn't do the application right?
Most of the time, that's just they didn't show up.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Pretty much plain and simple. Yeah, the one was a student and again, that's, and the other one happened to be a individual who was living with another individual, paying all their bills. And so when we questioned them, they said they hadn't looked for a job for over 10 years, so they chose not to work and so that's my...
Any other questions?
Or they did fail to come in.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just to give you an update, we are fully staffed, yay. Jenna is here, so hopefully that will take, give Stacy a little break when we get into her doing minutes full-time, so we are excited in our office. And as you saw in the claims, the e-poll books, we did pay those, so that is paid and done. And this Dustin from Midwest Cyber Solutions, that we talked about the maintenance and software with the elections, he is going to come in possibly in May and go over everything with you, so if you have any questions. He's working with the city right now to, to do the software with the city, but he will be in to talk to the county, so just to give you an update there. And other than that, kind of business as usual, unless anybody has any questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Three minutes. Who's got a three-minute one? You longer? Dick's got longer than three minutes?
Good morning. To be very brief, we're still crack filling. Load limits will go on the roads next Monday. The bill came out of the House State Affairs Committee yesterday and they made more amendments, so we'll see how that goes, but they want to limit the two-cent gas tax increase each year for only three years. And first, it was unlimited, second was eight years, now it's down to three years. Five-dollar wheel tax up to 12 wheels, it will be eligible if it goes through, and a 20% increase in non-commercial license plates. So that will be coming up, we'll see how it finishes out as it goes through. So, that's all I have unless you have some questions. Okay, thanks.
I have more questions for you later, especially when you start talking about roads. And Marty, you're over the two-minute presentation. We can put the cloth over the clock. Hmm? Pardon?
I can come and pull my chair.
Oh, I thought Gary was on the agenda, so.
You have to, uh...
Oh, okay.
Morning.
Morning.
Just briefly, busy weekend at the jail. We probably had over 40 in jail over the weekend. We're down to 35 right now. I have eight, six females and a couple, a couple of them from Moody County that we got a contract with. I have 50 on 24/7 program and we're just starting to get, using the drug patch and I have three individuals that come in once a week and, and we have to remove their drug patch, which is training to, to do this and then send it in and have it tested and stuff. So we have three of those right now. Busy in the chemical dependency side, evidently the jail is, I, I think we're a hospital than a jail, to be honest with you. We, I have two in, well, we just got, one just got, a lot of the problems is with the chemical dependency, dependency side, is that they don't have beds for them and then so where do they go? So they put them in jail, so now I have to, my staff has to deal with them and, and we have an individual that, you know, really is not a... is not a Brookings, even a Brookings County resident. I guess he was, he was an SDSU student here that isn't going to school. He was in Nebraska. He'd been arrested here for drugs. And he had to come to court on Monday. And then they start a chemical dependency hold on him. And also, and he escaped from us once. And even I had to go out and help get him back at Pizza King. But now, he had his trial yesterday or his hearing, and now he has to, I've had him for a week, and now I gotta sit with him for another week before he gets a bed. You know, it's kind of, it's tough on my staff, you know, because I'm dealing with all these other individuals. And it just seems like, Hy-Vee was there yesterday, and I think they came in with sacks of meds for these individuals that are fighting depression, anxiety. And of course, I think some of it stems because they're in jail. But it, you know, it's, you know, we have a part-time nurse that does a good job, and she's abused. We call her, the poor gal works nights, and we call her all day to come in and take care of inmates and stuff. And it's just, you know, I gotta give kudos to my staff because they really do a good job with handling this stuff. And the thing that I don't like is the exposure that the county has with, with the jail when it comes to holds on mental commitments. And, but they, everybody always has an opinion on how we do things. But yet, no one helps us to improve what we're doing, you know, how to handle this stuff, you know? A lot of the committals that we deal with, they start at the hospital. But for some reason, East Central Behavioral Health thinks that my jail administrator is the committal king, and that we commit all these people. And it starts at the hospital, a lot of them. We don't even start this stuff. And it's, it's just kind of frustrating. And I just want to say that we do the best we can to handle these situations. And it's, I just think sometimes we're a dumping point. But who's going to do it? If there's nobody else in town, if the hospital doesn't want them, and there's not room, this, for instance, we, the one of the committals, or the chemical dependency ones, is that he agreed to go to Serenity Hills. So we transported him to Serenity Hills, and the deputy didn't even leave the town, and they called him back and said that they didn't want him. Because Serenity Hills doesn't want anybody that doesn't want to be there. So once he got there, they says, hey, we hope you have a good stay. And he goes, well, I don't want to be here. So then they called my deputy. And he didn't even leave the city limits yet, and had to go back and get him, you know? So I mean, it's just, those are frustrating things. But that, we're, we're handling those. So. Other than that, we've, we continue just to keep going. When Clyde talks about drug arrests, I think, I have an active investigator that is starting to make some drug connections and so forth, and making some arrests. So some of that, you know, I think will see more increases. It just seems like the meth is coming back. And I think we're, we're getting a little more aggressive on drug arrests. Other than that, I guess I'm done. I got off my soapbox there. I apologize for that. But I just want to say my staff does really a good job in handling these things. And it is an insurance exposure for us with, withholding these that should actually be in a facility that has full-time medical staff, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Just, just want to say, you know, having been chair of the mental health board for 22 years, I know what a great job your staff does. And I do know the liability issues. And the jail is the place of last resort, and we need that facility. I think I heard some frustration from you with what's going on with East Central. And is, Brian, are you our East Central person now?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I have that same frustration for years and years and years with East Central. And maybe that's something that needs to be addressed. Because I think East Central could be, and we are providing them funding, are we not? I think that that would be something that we should have a conversation about, that maybe Abby should be involved in that because she does the mental health commitments. And we should tell East Central what it is that we need from them as relates to mental health commitments. Because I don't think they are as helpful as what the code requires them to be. That's just a statement in my opinion, and I think it's something we should be looking at.
And we are. And I gotta give credit to Abby. We've already had probably, what, three meetings? And it's, we go over the same stuff, but it just doesn't seem to change. Abby's got another meeting planned for April 2nd, something like that. So we are going to try to make some headway on that. So we're trying.
And I just think that when it is an organization that's receiving funding from us, we should be getting better service.
Thank you.
On just being public about that.
Any other questions? Stephanie, did you, well, I wanted to congratulate your publicity and marketing arm on your body cameras. I saw it on every news station and paper. You did a nice job there. And I assume it's been received positively.
Yeah. And I think so. We just got them going last Wednesday. All the deputies were giving a class on it and stuff.
No, it was handled.
Anxious to...
Handled very professionally. I represented the county very well.
Thank you.
Well, okay. Gary, you're back there, but you're on the agenda. So I'm gonna jump to Carrie. Is that okay? And, you know, they cover the, come on up, Carrie. Brett from CDI. And in the legislature, they cover the clock. Now, when you got electronic clocks in front of you, I don't know what they do. They must put black tape over them or something. Sorry. Thanks for waiting, Carrie.
Good morning. Thanks for meeting with me today. The discussion that we're at hand here is 213th Street, which goes on the north side of the Valero Ethanol Plant, and goes to the proposed Novita Oil Processing Site, which is about, well, it's in the next section west of Valero. So the discussion that we have had previously was for reconstruction of this road. It's currently a, or was a township road, and then now it's been taken over by county. And the ability to get heavy trucks in and out of the Novita Processing Facility is the purpose of this. So we have had discussions at previous, I know with previous commissioners, I had discussions about right-of-way. And I think I addressed the commission some time ago about right-of-way. And the discussion at that time was that we are not buying additional right-of-ways. So that's kind of the way we've set this up. So we have not anticipated that we would need to get additional right-of-way, although it would be nice, I think from Dick's perspective, when it comes to maintenance, to have nice wide big ditches to throw snow in. But we aren't going to do that. And the illustration that I gave you that's called typical sections, you can see that the roadway that's planned is a 28-foot top. So it would be two 12-foot driving lanes and two 2-foot shoulders. And that's fairly typical for, for this type of road. And then you can see kind of where the right-of-way falls on the left side, on the, on both the top and the bottom typical sections. And with a typical 10-foot ditch, that right-of-way would fall outside of the bottom of the ditch typically. So in order to accommodate the ditches, we'll have to narrow that up in order to make the ditch fit within the right-of-way. We may need some temporary easements from some of the landowners. That would be beneficial. We could get by without it if we had to, I think for the construction. But what we're going to be spending our time on and concentrating on is actually the surface of the road, making that suitable so that we can get trucks in and out of there without having to put any load restrictions on them. So the opinion of costs that I gave you, we've included two different options. The first one is for an asphalt surface. And you can see that the total cost there is estimated around $869,000. The second one is for concrete, and that's just a little over 1.4 million. So I guess it's up, either way, it isn't going to affect the engineering cost, really. The only thing it may affect is testing. We may have to do more testing on the concrete. But I have included testing in my engineering fees that I've proposed, and I think you got that in your packet. But you can see there's a line item in the construction side for testing. And we did include testing relative to asphalt in there. Concrete may take a little bit more, just because we have cylinders to take, and we have a bunch of other tests like air and slump. And we have cylinders to break, things like that, that would be a little bit in addition to that. But other than that, I think we're pretty close. My, I guess my impression was that you weren't interested all that much in the concrete anyway. So that's why I estimated it for asphalt.
Quick question. Just looking back on our last one here, we had woven, geotextile, and here we have geo-grid reinforcement. What's the difference? Is that a...
They're both a geotextile that will provide additional strength and stability to the subgrade. And of course, the whole idea is that you spread out the wheelload over a larger surface on the subgrade. And by using the, the geotextile, we're able to do that without putting in additional base course. So the, the difference is that the geo-grid is a geometric pattern, geotextile, and the woven geotextile is like a flat fabric. So that's the difference. We don't know exactly which one we're going to use yet because we really haven't done the design. But either one would be about the same price. So we think that the geotextile will probably do a better job than the woven material at this time. But until we do the engineering, we won't know for sure.
So the change in price is more on the square footage than it is, it looks like it's about 50 cents more square yard?
Right.
Because why is the square footage so much different? It's almost 9,000 square feet more than it was previously.
I didn't hear what you said, Ryan.
Sorry. I'm just, the quantity from the last bid was almost 23,000. This one's 32,000. Why is the quantity so much more?
On this one?
On this one, yeah. Because I mean, the difference in price is almost $40,000. And it looks like there's a 50 cents difference in unit cost, but there's...
Would be about $16,000.
We have it at 70,000 and 112,000 on the new bid. And so it just looks like quantity is quite a bit different.
Well, when we did the first...
Square yards.
When we did the first one, we didn't know exactly where the entrances for Novita would be. And so this one is updated to where the entrances actually are going to be placed into their property. So we're, we're planning to extend this to the westernmost entrance of the Novita facility, which is about, we're guessing in that 7,600 linear feet range. So, I mean, when we did the first preliminary opinion, we didn't have as much information as we do now. And so we've tried to update this, number one, to current costs, and number two, to what we anticipate the quantities will actually be. And we've probably estimated a little bit strong on some of these quantities, just because we'd rather be a little bit strong than light.
Yeah.
I mean, for obvious reasons.
All right.
I think that the agreement that was submitted is probably your boilerplate agreement.
Yes.
Okay. And would there be a problem with making, in the payment procedures, Part B, making that 45 days instead of 30?
No.
We would anticipate paying within 30, but because we have to go through hearing, we don't want to miss a date. And I talked a little bit with Stacy about that, and it would be helpful to us if that was a 45-day instead.
That's not a problem. Yeah, we can, we can make that edit very easily. I think we can just, we can probably just cross it out and initial it and make that change very quickly.
We'll get to the agreement when he's done this presentation on action items.
Mr. Chair, one thing, as we proceed with this, we are not road builders. And I have learned a very hard lesson, that we need you to tell us what we need to actually be doing. And when I say we, I use that loosely because actually, it's Dick. You know, if, if we do indeed have to go out and obtain some easements, then we need you to tell us that we need to do that, and when we need to do that. So, you know, we are relying on you to lead us through this if we, if we proceed. And so I just want to caution you that way. And I think that will save all of us a lot of grief. Just my soapbox thing from our last experience.
Understood. And let me, let me just kind of, you know, of course, this is very preliminary, and we, we haven't really done any engineering work on this yet. So my, the way I would envision this working is, once we have all of the data that we need, I mean, we, we would probably want to get a few borings, geotechnical borings, to see exactly what we have underneath the existing surface. So that's part of the data collection process. And then we would try to get our design, part of this is, is that we were somewhat constrained originally when I first talked to the commission. And because we were told that we are not getting any additional right-of-way. Okay? So that told us what our limits were. Okay? So our efforts are based on trying to get the surface that we need. And so our anticipation is that we will undercut everything and rebuild it from a depth at least one foot below top of subgrade. And we may have to go more. So we'll rebuild the existing material to that point. And we may, in order to widen the road, to get the width that we need, we're going to have to drop the surface down a little bit so that we can stay within the existing right-of-way. So that's going to limit the ditches a little bit, a little bit more. But really, the ditches that you have now are not going to be too much different than what you'll have once the road is done. So our efforts are going to be based on trying to make sure that the surface is good, and that we can still maintain drainage in there the way it is now. So that's primarily the way we're looking at this. You know, some, maybe it's been over a year ago, we had a call from the Rural Electric People that they wanted to put in a power line. And they asked me if, if we were planning to extend the right-of-way on that road. And I said, well, you know, first of all, I don't even have a contract to do anything on that road. Secondly, I was told by the commission that the right-of-way will not change. So you deal with it then, as you will. But that's the information that I had.
Well, Ryan and I met with them, and that question was brought up while we were talking about 34th. And we came back and kind of just had, see if anybody changed their mind. And they hadn't. So I told Michelle Nielsen that, yeah, we're still in the same right-of-way. I think it's updating or new, I can't remember.
Building is currently in lockdown. Stay in your office. Move away from interior doors and windows and take cover.
Do we have a policeman in here?
Intruder alert. Building is currently in lockdown. Stay in your office. Move away from interior doors and windows and take cover.
What do you want me to do?
Let's just, uh...
Intruder alert. Building is currently in lockdown. Stay in your office. Move away from interior doors and windows.
Premature panic?
That's the first time we ever called one of our guests an intruder. You're not the intruder. Okay, Gary, have you discussed everything that you wanted to bring before we talk about the agreement?
Unless there are other questions, yes.
Quick question, so what Commissioner Miller asked you about of administration of it and everything, that, that's what you're quoting? You're going to provide all of, everything for us to go to bid and work through the whole construction process with us? And that's, with your bid, that's all included, correct?
Our, our proposal is to do everything, okay? So, we would handle the preliminary engineering, any contact that we need with landowners. We'll work with Dick to make sure that, you know, things are done the way that he wants to see them done. And we'll take the bids from the contractors and, or we'll prepare everything for the bids. You guys will get the bids and react to them. And then, once we get into construction, we'll handle everything from there. And that's, that's what we're proposing. And my, my proposal is based on an hourly, not to exceed. So, the numbers that I'm showing you here are the maximum that we would be billing the county, and it may be less.
I wasn't here for all of the other conversations.
I know.
Just, just a very basic question here. All of this says this is phase one. Is there a phase two? Or, because it, when I read the description, it looks like it covers us all the way through the project.
Right. Well, here's the thing, once we get to the point where we're ready to take bids, then we're, and we take bids, then we're into the phase two construction part. So, we would ask the commission to authorize the construction, because you would have to accept the bids and award the contract to the contractor. So, then we would be into phase two, and we would have to have authorization to proceed.
Okay. And has there been some conversation about what phase two from your end of the, of the agreement would cost?
That's already included in here.
That is included in, in the fifty-one thousand.
Well, there's, there's, we've broken this, this down quite, quite extensively, as you can see. When you get into, you can see we have preliminary design, we have final design, we have advertising and bidding. And then, phase two is the construction administration.
Okay, that's phase two.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, yes, you were next. Well, we would design it for fifty-five, but the commission, of course, can set the speed at whatever they wish. I would suggest that they set it at a lower speed, because we do have a residence. We do have a residence along the north side there that we would have to take into consideration. And we could, we could expand this to the south, but you have to keep in mind, Valero is a huge company, and to try to get easements from Valero may take a month of Sundays at least. And, I mean, it's, it's going to take a while to deal with them, and that's something to consider. My impression is, at least from my opinion, if you want to get the best prices, you need to get this out as soon as possible. Either that or wait until next year. Because if you don't, the, the problem is that the contractors get filled up. And then, when we go out for bids, they're bidding this as, well, if I, if I get it, great, you know, I'm going to make some money on it. But if I don't, who cares? Because we got plenty of work. And so, we're really probably two months too late already. So, I'm just letting you know that, that the later we bid it, the worse the prices are going to be, especially in today's climate, because there's a lot of work out there for contractors right now. And the, as a matter of fact, I talked to the local contractors here, and they indicated to me a month ago that they were pretty much full for the summer.
So, you, you expect going to bid would at least be two months away for you to have all your engineering and that kind of stuff? Is that what you're anticipating?
Well, if, if we don't change anything and have to get easements, I think we could get this thing out within maybe four weeks. If we have to try to do easements and things like that, we could delay it into next year. But that's a choice that you guys can make. I mean, if we don't get it out until next spring, I'd have to, I don't know what Novita's schedule is specifically, but I think they're planning to be up and operational within probably twelve months. So, that would be spring of, of twenty sixteen. So, we may be a little late if we try to do it then, but that's, that's up, it's certainly up to you guys. Right. Absolutely, that's an option. Yep. And we could actually set up the contract for that. The thing is, they may be, of course, you know, it's probably, if we use asphalt paving, you'd be able to pave this road in about a week, both lifts. So, it wouldn't be that big a deal. You'd have to do some dressing up of the, of the subgrade or the, the base course before you paved, but that wouldn't take very long. So, that's a possibility. Yeah, that's, that is a, I think that's something that we should discuss. But I guess it depends on the timelines you want to set.
Mr. Chair, that's exactly what I was going to bring up, Dick, that our road use agreement states that we have the road, complete final construction of the new roadway prior to substantial completion of the user's facility, the Novita plant, or another date as everybody would agree to. So, if we do not intend to do it this year, we probably want to get something in writing.
Well, we had discussed this, Dick's idea earlier, I don't know if you remember that, 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 you actually said sometimes, that's really good, to put the asphalt after it's sat a year, the road. But we do need to time this with Novita, but, yeah, I think it was at least twelve months from the beginning of the construction season.
I, I think it's twelve to fourteen months, once they start.
Which would, we would make that by, maybe, but maybes aren't very good in the court of law.
Well, perhaps we should ask Novita what their date of operation will be, and then we can shoot for that date.
Is your agreement, which I'm moving into an action item, but I guess, does that carry over? Was there a timeframe, I guess?
No.
I mean, that would be for the project, whether we just did.
Well, as long as it, I mean, within reason. As long as we don't carry this out five years, we're good.
We're at a bit of a disadvantage here, too, because we don't really know their timeline either, so we're kind of guessing. But I, it has been very amicable thus far, and I wouldn't imagine that we would have an issue with giving them a good road, albeit, it's not hard surface. And, and I, I don't think that there would be an issue with that, and I think we only need to ask.
One thing we would, I think, want to do is, if we, if we only do the grading this year and the paving next year, I think we would want to include some costs in there for dust control. We, I'm sure we'd want to put several applications of dust control on there, just so we wouldn't have complaints.
I, I agree with Dick on, I mean, it's county road, we get it graded up gravel, leaving it for, you know, I'd like to see the majority of the construction traffic go in on the road before it's paved. Say we're on, say we're on the asphalt surface.
Right.
That's, I guess, my opinion, too.
Okay.
Okay, well, I think, there's any more questions about your open period? I think we'll move to the agreement itself, and then we'll see if we have some more questions. And I would like to move into the regular business. And item A is action to approve agreement number fifteen dash thirty-nine, an agreement between Civil Design Incorporated. Perkins, you removed that while I'm reading. Perkins County Engineering Services regarding two hundred and thirteenth road project amended with the section B stating forty-five days instead of thirty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second, okay. Discussion? Discussion on that agreement? Just a thought, once we sign the agreement, would you be willing, or, because you are in constant contact, or would you put that on us to work with Novita on their timing of their project? I think you.
No, I, I will handle that.
Okay, and, because.
Because we are doing the engineering for Novita as well.
Yeah, I, I thought so. In the last couple of years, there's, you know, this has been on and off in discussion, but it was how to time a road and a construction project and have a road they, they can open when it's ready to operate, you know, so.
Right.
Yeah, perfect.
Yes.
Okay, any more question or discussion on the motion?
Do we need a provision in there that says that a time period, because we talked, it'll be this year or next year? We just don't know. Does it, do we need something in there that says that?
From my perspective, you don't. That's up to you guys. Either way, it isn't going to change what we're doing.
I don't think it's necessary. I think we know, we need to try to get this, this portion of it out to bids, to have this much of it done at least this year.
Would that be a two-bid process, or would be all, and the contractor would know that they're going to do the second part the next year?
We could do it either way. If you prefer to do it separately, we could do that.
I think we probably need to have a discussion with Novita, get their timeline first. Figure that out there, maybe have them, invite them into a meeting, discuss their timeline. We can discuss with you the best possible scenario, and it may be a two-bid, it may be a one. But I'm hoping that we're more competitive on the first part of some of that stuff, and we can do, like you said, a really good road to begin with, to get all of that construction. And I agree with what Larry said, it'd be nice to get their contracting and construction trucks on a, on a gravel road. We can build it back up, put the, put the asphalt back on and eliminate some of that wear and tear on the asphalt, too.
Sure.
But I think we got to get Novita here, talk with them, make sure we're on the same page, especially with that agreement.
Well, if you would like, I can initiate that discussion and come back to you and let you know when they plan to be operational, and then that will drive our schedule.
Okay. Any other question or discussion? Are you done? Call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
In terms of the agreement, do you want, how do you want to handle that? I have a clean copy with me. We can just cross out the thirty and write in forty-five and initial it and. That'd be fine. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Go Jax.
We're sure hoping so. Item B, action to approve the twenty fifteen annual weed bid. Moved, moved and seconded. Gary, you might as well get up here. You're on the program for a little bit. I think we had two bids.
Good morning. I'm here for the approval of the weed bid. There was two bids that came in and were fifty cents cheaper than we were last year on the bid. So, we're headed in the right direction, and in four thousand gallons, that's, doing the math, that's a nice tidy little savings. And it's also a dollar eighty less than what it came in at in two thousand thirteen. So, if it keeps going in that direction, pretty soon, it'll be just right.
Is the motion for the low bid? Yes. Okay. Any other question? Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wyeth?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I would just like to say that Ag First was the low bidder for the viewing public.
Yep, thank you. And thanks, Leanne, for noticing that little thing in B, by the way. I was going to mention that.
Any other questions?
Oh, you're, you're, we're going to talk about action to approve or request fill vacancy for the weed and pest supervisor position is the next item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving seconded, okay. Question, discussion? When, when were they looking for a start date?
Yeah. I went.
As soon as possible, correct?
Right, as soon as possible. I need to have somebody, you know, shadowing me there to, when I took over the department, I'd been working for the department for three years, and I also shadowed Gary for approximately a year before I took over. So, I think I, I think I called him once, asked him something. As short as this period of time is, I'm sure my phone will probably ring a time or two, because there's a lot of things that come up that it's hard to cover. I mean, you can't just step in here, take over, and, and, and expect to run the, the department without some problems, so.
And I think that maybe the commission doesn't realize, Gary does all of his own paperwork. He does not have any assistance with that. So, it's not only what he does out in the field, but there's extensive paperwork and timelines involved and regulations with chemicals. So, it's, it's not something that you can just step into.
And meetings, department, or annual meetings and, yeah, not, not that it takes up so much time, but the one for the state takes a good share of a week, so.
I got a quick question. So, shadowing type of thing, I'm assuming we're going to have to pay two people at the same time then, correct? Okay, and then, so we'll need to do a supplemental or something like that for a few months? Is that, because I'm pretty sure that wasn't in the budget.
Well, but.
How does that work, I guess?
Maybe not. It depends on where we start the new person. Right, we got to pay, pay out.
Right, well, I'm just, yeah. I just didn't know, you know, when you say shadow, did you, so we had two supervisors on at the same time for three or four months?
I was an assistant supervisor at the time, yes.
Okay. So, but we're going to be jumping somebody right to supervisor? We're not going to hire him as an assistant for a few months and then, right?
He, you can hire him if, I would say, as a, as a truck driver, because I'm going to keep one slot. Being I drive truck, the person that's going to take my job should also, that should be one of the requirements for him to drive truck. That way, we can keep one, we can, we can hire one person short. I need two ATV drivers, and I need a truck driver. But with this new person coming on, if they're a truck driver, and they should be if they're going to run this department, basically, the pay is coming from that position.
From that position, okay.
Yeah, Leanne?
Gary, is, does your office have a, a set of written procedures? It explains, you know, how you do this and that and the next thing and, and everything laid out in writing? Or are you not quite that?
It's, there, I do have a, I have made up a three-ring binder there that will help extensively. You know, not everything can be in there, but Ron Maureen from the Department of Ag is, is very good about emailing me, or emailing ever, or all the weed supervisors in the state. in the state, uh, dates that are coming up, that you've got to have stuff done by, and, uh, or any meetings that are coming up that you maybe should attend, uh, so, between the emails and the, the three-ring binder that I have, the per, the, the next person should have things pretty well covered, and like I said, uh, I'm only a phone call away.
So, you have, this notebook would function like a procedures manual for the, the weed department, is that, it's in a format that somebody could-
Yes.
-look at that and move forward? Thank you.
In our packet, was a couple of organizational charts proposed, um, they're very different than what it is right now, I guess I'm not familiar with the, the, eighty-four is one of them, and page eighty-four, page eighty-eight, there were two proposed, what is, what is our current, or what is, which one of the two are you recommending?
That was my question, of how, we're advertising for the supervisor position, how do we have them drive truck first, and then take the supervisor's position after, you know, you would leave, that's, that was my, my question, how do you?
I believe Gary was saying that whoever we hire should have the truck driving-
Right.
-so they could go.
I totally understand, yeah, exactly what you're saying, that's part of the qualifications that we should be here, but the shadowing part, for the two months, or when they're starting, whatever work worth, obviously, you're going to continue to receive your salary, and when we advertise to hire a supervisor-
Right.
-we'll have two supervisors for two months, and, and that's fine if that's the case, but we're not really, you know, are we equipped to pay it, we're going to, are we going to have to, we didn't balance, or we didn't budget for that, basically?
He budgeted for the truck driver position, but we're not hiring that position, so that gives us a little bit of-
Little portion of money, okay.
Plus, we could, we could say in our ad that there was going to be a two-month training period, and you get this salary during training and this salary when you move.
Can you do that?
Oh, sure.
That was my question with Laura, I guess we could ask her-
You can do that.
I don't know, I, I just, I'm not sure you can advertise for supervisor and say, okay, for three months, you're going to get paid as a truck driver first, and then, in the grade scale that the truck drivers are there, and then after that, you're going to supervisor. I mean, I, I appreciate you, I'm glad you're willing to-
Maybe during the interview, we can just tell them, that's the way it's going to be.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate you wanting to stick around and helping us with that, too, so I appreciate that.
You go from, you go from an hourly employee to a salary employee, too.
And you just advertise it that way.
Okay.
Just for a comparison purpose, when I came on, I came on in the exact capacity training under mark for about four months. I was hired as a deputy state's attorney, we were both deputy state's attorneys when we were, when I was hired on, I was at the bottom of the pay range-
Right, exactly, that's-
-and he was at the top, so your range is maybe what's different, but, that's just a comparison from another department.
All right, we can get to work, great.
Okay, any more questions on the motion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then D is, uh, request to fill vacancy for two ATV drivers in the weed and pest department for the twenty fifteen season.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, question or discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, this, F, discussion possible, action on agreement number fifteen dash forty, a Brookings County drainage-
We, uh, we skipped E.
Oh, God, John, it's John's birthday today, and I thought he wanted to work all by himself, I guess, I don't know. Okay, too fast with the pen, E, action to, uh, approve or request to fill vacancy for a general maintenance worker in the commission department.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, question or discussion? Hearing none, um, take the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carried.
This is John's birthday today, though, isn't it? Oh, okay, uh, okay. Now, F, thank you for coming up, Robert, discussion possible, action on agreement number fifteen dash forty, a Brookings County drainage proposal from Banner Associates, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve for discussion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, okay, discussion questions?
On February twenty-fifth, we had a meeting with Banner's, Banner's associate, brought up their drainage personnel, Mr. Oden's and Mr. Kent Johnson came up, gave us a presentation on what it would cost to update the original nineteen eighty-five plan, that money was approximately ninety thousand dollars, the board that met, or the, um, ad hoc committee that, that met that day, did not recommend that that plan be approved because of the cost, and, but during the discussion, Banner's did bring up a, a question, they said, they asked us what we was looking for, what's the total scope, and it ended up being, well, do we even know if we can, what we can do down there because of the Corps of Engineers? They do control the waters of the state, and they've got a big say in the matter, and quite honestly, no one has ever sat down with them in this particular area, we've had the Corps out for other areas in Brookings County, but never in this specific area. So, what they proposed during the meeting was, at their room, to help us schedule, set up, and facilitate a meeting with the Corps of Engineers, and Brookings County, the townships involved, and local concerned citizens would all be involved in this meeting. They did send us a quote, which I included in your packet, the total quote is two thousand five hundred dollars, looks like one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to contact the Corps ahead of time, do the legwork ahead of time, and then a thousand twenty-five dollars for the actual day of the meeting and facilitation. And the committee, that, this is basically what the committee wanted me to bring to the county commission with the recommendation that we do approve it, because without this, it's like a three-legged stool, you pull one of the legs out and the stool falls down, where we don't know if we got three legs yet or not. We know we got the township that's got issues, Brookings County is responsible for county drainage, and then the Corps is the other leg, so without knowing all, all three legs, we-
So, the Corps is going to come in and tell us what we can and cannot do, that is their only function?
Basically, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because in light of past experiences with the Corps, I certainly don't want them running what's going on here.
Well, no, the, well, they would, they, let me back up just a second, they would tell us what we, we could possibly do.
Okay.
And then, if we proceed, and then start to get engineer plans and all that, then they will be reviewing, because that's their preview, waters of the state, if it's touching that Big Sioux River, they're going to be, be involved in the future, so I don't want to leave, leave today and, and think that the Corps is going to be totally out of the future, because they're-
Well, I don't care if they review our plans, I just don't want them running the show, because I don't want us to be flooded.
They won't come into my territ, they won't come into my territory and run the show.
All right, that sounds good.
Do they, do they provide any services, I mean, can, do they have, um, people that, on staff, I'm sure they do, you know, that can help provide a, a study for us, is there a, I mean, is that part of the discussion here, we're going to see, I mean, do they have any hydrologists that could do studies for us?
Well, they've got a lot of people, nationwide, obviously-
Right.
But whether or not, the Omaha district, which just falls under, and the offices in Pierre, whether or not they're willing to put any money into a project like this, that's what this, this is going to be like a scoping meeting, to determine what is the Corps willing to do towards.
Yeah.
The, the true, true answer to your question is, I don't know what, what they're cap, I know what they're capable of doing.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, the Corps wants to put most of their money in them big locks on the Mississippi River, and, and, and large projects, but it's our job, when they come here, between us and Banner's associate, and that's why, if they facilitate it, their job would be to lay all the facts out, and determine, is this project a project worthy of the Corps putting their, their dollars into?
Yeah.
I think it'd have to be authorized by Congress, I mean, actually, yeah.
Um, yeah, the Corps has got hydrologists, that's the-
Right, I mean, if there was a-
As a federal project, you know.
Okay, and that would, it would be, it'd turn out to be a federal project, then, rather than a-
We don't want to do that.
Right, but I just, I, I don't foresee, I don't ever foresee it becoming a federal project.
Okay, well, that's good.
It's just, it, you know, to us, it's a big issue, I understand to the landowners south of the escurve, it's a really big issue, but in, in the scope of the nationwide Corps of Engineers drainage outlook, it's a, it's a minor issue.
Now, Bob, this is going to be site-specific for the south drainage, correct?
Correct, this is only from probably Thirty-second Avenue South, down to the Big Sioux River, they might take a look at Twentieth, I don't, I'm not sure, Twentieth is more city limits now, so-
Correct.
-we can only basically talk about probably Thirty-second Street South to the Big Sioux River.
And it will not deal with any other drainage issues within the county?
Within the county, no. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not entirely clear for the twenty-five hundred dollars, what, what Banner's doing other than calling the Corps and getting, setting up the meeting, what el, what else are they doing, we can do that for not twenty-five hundred dollars, what else are they doing besides making that call and getting that set up?
Well, they're preparing documents, they're sending documents to the Corps, they're-
What?
They're, they're doing the legwork, they're talking to the Corps in language that I, I couldn't talk to, I mean, I can call the Corps and see if they're willing to come out.
Exactly.
But if we don't have the expertise of that Banner's does, to explain to them what exactly are we looking for, I mean, I bring them here, and they come to a meeting, and we don't have our ducks in line on exactly what are we looking for, then the Corps is just wasted a trip out, and, and they're just going to say, no, we don't want to, we don't want to deal with it.
And what, what documents will Banner be preparing, other than making copies of that nineteen eighty-five report?
Well, I'm sure they assembled all the stuff, they, Banner's have also done all the drainage for the city of Brookings, so that the flows coming in, they can update the Corps on the eighty-five plan, to the modern-day flows from the city drainage plan.
And the presence of their hydrologist, correct?
Yeah. Yes, Kent, Kent Johnson is a hydrologist.
He estimate fourteen hours, I don't know how that works in the legal field, but that's their estimate. Uh, any word from Jay about maybe doing half?
Well, Mr. Gilbertson said, if the county commission wanted, we could have applied to his board for partial funding, he said to be, be careful, because if, if we, if we apply now for half of twenty-five hundred, which they may or may not be able to approve, then in the future, you won't be able to apply again, more than likely.
Yeah, do we want to burn up our one token on us?
And, and I'm not saying it's only a one-time deal, but that's, that was brought up in the discussion.
Yeah. Okay. Any other question or discussion on the agreement?
Well, I, you know, I understand where, uh, Leanne's coming from there, too, but, um, I, I got a feeling they're going to be able to give the flow rates from the city, and why that water's getting there, and the amount that it's going there, so hopefully they can come prepared, uh, to have good discussions and that kind of stuff, and, and I guess I want to get this started, um, and twenty-five hundred dollars seems reasonable, um, that I think we could be able to do, and, uh, let's get the, get the meeting, let's see what, uh, the Corps is willing to do, if they're willing to do something, or just support, or just give us the okay, either way, we kind of know, and then we can look at more projects from there, but I think it's a, it's a good start, and I, something that I think we could, we could handle and get started, so.
And we have to, if I may, we have to be prepared if, if the Corps says no, I mean, it's not, it's going to be a yes or no type, type deal, the Corps doesn't, that's one thing about the Corps of Engineers, they don't come in and say maybe, there's no maybes with the Corps.
And that's basically the landowners down south, they're, they're on board, they know exactly what's going on here, they want to know, too, can we actually do anything down there, or is it just, we're wasting our time, so. Okay.
I, too, appreciate, uh, Commissioner Pierce's questioning of the amount, I, I think we have to proceed, but, uh, I might caution Banner to spend their time wisely, so it would be under the twenty-five hundred.
And I'd like to see, if we move forward on this, that, that the documents that are set to the Corps, couldn't we download those to Dropbox, so we all can have access to them and take a look at them? I'd like to see what it is, even though I'm not sitting on that committee, because it's such a big issue from a dairy township.
Well, that's, right now, all we have is a nineteen eighty-five study.
Exactly.
City flows and stuff like that, I don't know what, how much water's coming down there, if there's been increased, if it's not, but I think the city has done some stuff, especially with their retention, detention ponds, to control how much flow and the timing of the flow, so I think there's got to be that information, and I have not seen that either, but it's more been city stuff than-
We, we can request any written documentation, they send to the Corps of Engineer, the Brookings County Commission gets a copy, or else we won't sign the agreement approving it.
Anything in the meeting, we sure can bring it forward.
But, but a lot of this is also, there's going to be hydrologists talking to hydrologists level, too, so.
Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, uh, call, call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, I'll contact.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, item G, action to approve agreement number fifteen dash forty-one, easement agreement with Northern Sky Dairy.
Second.
Moved and seconded, question or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carried.
H, action to approve agreement number fifteen dash forty-two in the easement agreement with Northern Sky Dairy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
Are these left in permanently, or do they just use them for, maybe you know, they are permanent, okay.
What was the answer?
Can, can you bring up the-
Permanence.
Yeah, scroll it up. Dick, please come through your office, is the one under seventy-seven, they're borrowing that, correct? Okay, that's the, okay, that's the question I had.
Good questions.
It says down.
Thank you.
I just, I didn't think of asking the question, I appreciate it.
It's circled that it's more.
Any other question or discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Wysett?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Commission Department Director's report.
My staff report was included in your packet, um, I had a pretty extensive packet of information about NOVITA, all of the past information, I did also put on your desks this morning a copy of agreement fourteen thirty-three, that's the agreement that was, um, approved in April of last year for the agribusiness grant through the South Dakota Department of Transportation, uh, I think the other, there was a resolution that included that said we were going to apply, we got the letter from Governor Dugard, but this was the actual agreement, um, the letter that, uh, Chairperson Wysett had sent to the mayors and councils was included in your packet.
Yeah.
And there was also an example, um, Commissioner Wysett had asked an example of a work plan from the Brookings School District for you to consider, also, that was also included, um, I've included the agenda for the March sixteenth, that is, um, this coming Monday, the eight county, or the Sioux Valley Commissioners Quarterly Meeting in Bryant, Hamlin County is hosting, I think Stephanie said you're going to go, Tom is going, Larry, Leanne cannot, Ryan, you're, yes, going to Bryant, to eight county?
Yes.
Okay. Number five on my staff report, we had received a bill from the South Dakota Newspaper Association. It was approved today. Um, it dates back to February of 2014. They weren't, however, they thought they were sending us the bill, it wasn't getting to us. And we did some searching on our end and can't find where, that we ever received it. And we continued to place ads and they continued to bill us, but not, no one, the bill wasn't getting to us. So we're going to be, we're more on top of that now. So this bill dates back to most of 2014 as well. So I'm just making you aware of that. The call from Ken Myers about the, the traffic on North Madera. There was an email that was actually sent out from the Animal Science Department head that Marty had forwarded to me regarding this. And he was letting his people know that law enforcement is monitoring this area. And he reminded the folks to, to make sure that they're yielding to traffic. But that is a concern up there that has been brought forward before. There was, I'd, I'd received a call from someone who'd shared this information on SDCL 322235 as we move forward with potential funding for roads and bridges percentages. This statute lists out percentages of every county and every city on how they, what portion this road money gets dispersed back. This hasn't been looked at since the late 80s and no one is really talking about it, I don't believe, because I think there'll be winners and losers depending on how this was ever dispersed to begin with. It was based on population, I'm not sure, but just something that someone wanted me to pass along to you. And then I re, the most current legislative update from SD, SDACC is included. You did receive an invitation to the Brookings Volunteer Fire Department Annual Feed. That's on Tuesday, March 31st. I also set on your desk this morning the tentative agenda for spring workshop next week. We need to discuss travel arrangements to kind of get everybody on the same page. I believe LeAnn, Larry, Tom and Ryan, you were all traveling out together and you're leaving...
From the Highway Department.
From the Highway Department. 5:00 AM on Wednesday.
In the morning.
Five, that's what 5:00 AM means. Wednesday morning. Stephanie and I are going out together the day before. But I'll cancel hotel rooms that I had, I'll cancel hotel rooms for the four of you then for Tuesday night. You'll have them. And you want the hotel room for Wednesday night?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Yep. I will take care of that. We're starting to get in some carpet cleaning quotes for first floor of the courthouse. There's another couple that didn't get to me by yesterday. So I'll have some more updated information on that at the next meeting. We did receive an invitation too, late yesterday. The post legislative luncheon through the chamber is coming up on March 25th. We have to RSVP by March 20th. Do you want me to do that for you? I can sure do that if you let me know if you plan to attend that. With 11:45 to 1:00 and it is at the Dyke House Center this time, Sheekwin Champion's Room.
Question?
March 25th, Wednesday, March 25th.
Is this the one that has the post meeting?
Yes, this is David Owen's presentation.
Yeah, but there's a post meeting at one of these and wherever you meet with the other government agencies. Okay.
Passed our strategic plan, but that was one of the things was to try to facilitate the communication between different levels of our government there. And would that, would this be, I mean, I'm looking at my calendar and I can go and I'm open that afternoon. Would it, would it be prudent to maybe send an invitation out to SDSU? You know, our school board, the city, and do that meeting that we did last time? Because the last time we were at the Swiftell Center had the presentation and then we all stuck around and just gave an update of where we're going and what we're looking at in the future. And I thought it was good communication. So, and I don't know who facilitated it.
The Chamber.
This is the Chamber's meeting.
Committee.
Okay. So are they planning on doing the same? I guess, we talked to David.
It doesn't say that, but I could sure visit with them and see if that's something they plan on doing.
Okay.
Yep, that'd be great.
Who, do you want me though to RSVP for you for the luncheon? Are you each going to do that yourselves? Yes? Want me to? Okay. And you're all shaking your heads as you're going? Okay. And I'll, I'll double check on that, the other half of that meeting. I did receive a call yesterday from Margot Dempsey, the Walk a Mile in Her Shoes fundraiser for the domestic abuse shelter that they had about a year and a half ago. They are going to do that again. Uh, May 1st is the date of the walk. And then they're going to have a pre-registration event at First Lutheran Church on April 30th. The county was involved with that and did some fundraising for that when they did that a year and a half ago. So we'll be looking at doing that again. So we'll be, we'll be getting you information as we get that moving. That just kind of came up late in the day yesterday. I will be attending the exercise this Thursday. Bob said I'm the, I'm the, I'm the...
Public Information Officer.
I'm the Public Information Officer for the county.
And her first, her first thing to release as Public Information Officer is, we had an unscheduled alarm test today. And the whole county did real good except for one area.
Commission.
Right here.
County.
We did move.
Our, our downstairs offices all went into their safe room like they were supposed to. This room did not. Into that room and shut that door.
Yeah, the ante room or this room over here too is...
Are, are you pointing at the back room or the middle room? Which room was?
The ante room.
Oh, yeah, we can't say that. I don't know where you go. Yeah, yeah, I probably shouldn't have answered that one there, but...
But yes, I'll...
We'll find you a new place.
But I will be attending that exercise on Thursday. Friday, I'll be leaving a little early. I'm going to be traveling up to Aberdeen. My son's going to be wrestling in regions. I'll be attending the eight county meeting on Monday as well and then of course, spring workshop next week. So, um, other than that, unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Deputy State's Attorney.
Yeah, just briefly, a few updates, just to kind of follow up a little bit on what the sheriff said in his department head report. We did have a inter-agency meeting scheduled a few weeks ago, but it was the day we had a freak blizzard. So we canceled it that day and we have a meeting scheduled for April 2nd. And that is something that I've tried to do biannually and maybe we need to increase it, where we meet with law enforcement, my office, ECBH, the hospital. We try to work out the kinks that we do have in the involuntary mental commitment process. But it is an ongoing issue and I guess we will just stay in communications with Commissioner Krogman, who's the new board member for ECBH and hope that we can make some progress in that area. And just to clarify, I don't know if the board totally understands, but when the sheriff is talking about chemical dependency committals, so that's something that's initiated through the clerk of court's office. That's a separate committal process that we as the county are not involved in on the front side, but we're definitely involved in on the other side because those individuals have to be held in protective custody in the jail until determination is made. Whereas in the mental health commitments, they are held at the hospital until determination is made. Not the jail, but we're much more involved in that process. So there is a difference. That's often something we have to explain to community members. But we're certainly involved in all of it. And I just really can't say enough about the sheriff and his staff that do this process and the police department that has the interactions with these as well. They make my job easy and I think we all work really well together and we're trying to make the process as smooth as we can. Uh, and then the only other update I would have is that I just want to let the board know. I did go present at the school board meeting last night on Senate Bill 73. I meet regularly with the administration of the high school and our school resource officer just to address juvenile delinquency issues that we have ongoing in the district. And when I informed them of the new juvenile justice changes that may be on the horizon, they thought it would be beneficial for the school board to hear some of that information as it will impact the district if it does go into effect. So it was just an informative presentation, just to kind of explain the basics of the law. That's it.
Thank you.
Does East Central get involved in both of the mental and the chemical?
It depends. And the sheriff might know more about this than I do. With the chemical dependency committals, that process has started with the clerk of court's office and a court-appointed attorney in town is utilized to assist them. And Commissioner Pierce might know as well. Beyond that, my office has no involvement. So I do not know what level of a evaluation or examination they have to receive, if any, before a determination on treatment is received.
No, it's not always East Central Behavioral Health. The, the court sometimes decides, you know, like it could be stepping stone or another chemical dependency counselor in, in the area. So it's not always East Central Behavioral Health. The, the two that we had recently was, was stepping stone, I believe, came and it did the evaluation at, at the jail. So it's not always East Central Behavioral Health.
Okay, but you need somebody to give you an evaluation.
Right.
On both, both mental health and for chemical, somebody else has to come in and give you an evaluation.
Right.
Okay. Commissioner reports. Ryan, why don't you start?
Also the, uh, the main backups and the computers and all that kind of stuff. So we've, we've been working on that. We had an issue with it that one that we were going to use from, was the Highway Department, didn't, wasn't wired correctly. And so now we're getting an electrician there, getting that figured out. So working on it and stuff too. We talked about there's going to be a new wall hanging over by the Veteran's Service Office there. And also with, uh, some consideration for some plantings down at the planter there underneath the stairs. We have an area where people can, kind of are sitting there, but when they stand up, they could smack their head pretty good. So we're going to try to put some planters down there to try to stop that from happening. And then a couple other smaller, smaller things there too that we were just talking about. I think there'll be, uh, Avenue of Flags, isn't that right? Or the, at the veterans there who've signed up with the plaque is going to be put up there also. So that was at the Joint Powers Meeting there. And then had Hospital Board Meeting on the 26th also. Let me get to that one. That went fairly quickly. They're working on their capital campaign. The hot, for the hospital expansion and financing and all that kind of stuff. We had the avera dialysis annual update and they had the employee appreciation was on the 27th of February there. So things are moving along there at the health system and that kind of thing. And then had a Board of Health Meeting on the 5th. That was our first one. And we met there and they are looking at trying to permit a vertical expansion of the landfill, which a lot of the larger communities have been looking at. And a lot of the question comes in is where is our airport? But if they are able to get that permit from the state, they will extend the life of our landfill quite drastically, almost double it. And so they're working on that and, and so they need a state permit. They've tried to do that also. They did testing for methane gas. They're going to be doing that through the EPA. And the first testing, there was none, but as they start filling it up, they'll see more and more of that. And that's a requirement that they need to do. And they're also putting a new, um, scale in. The scale used is, is about to be $176,000. It's pretty spendy. But it's, it's going to be one of the, um, one of the top line ones. The one they've had has been, I think, in use for almost 20 years and the life expectancy is about like eight. So they've gotten really good use out of this last scale, but it's just, it's kind of, kind of going. And they asked how much value is left out of it and they said about $2,000. So we've definitely used the scale to its best of its ability and it's time for a new one. And they put out bids for that and Vanderburgh Scales, it'll be a pit scale and which allows them to be underneath and working on it. And so it'll be, uh, it's, it looks like it's a good project, uh, need to be done. Spring cleanup, um, the landfill will be open April 6th. And then curbside pickup will start April 13th for, uh, for spring cleanup. So paint exchange is April 11th. Those are the things that they're working on there for, for that, so. And I think I may, that might be it for me.
Well, we bailed on the township meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We left those three hanging.
We, we intend to thank you.
We were there, but not long enough.
Yeah, we were there, yeah, we were there good, 11:30 till 2:00, I think, something like that.
But we thank you.
Yeah, I was there.
Stephanie?
On the 26th, I too went to the Joint Powers Board Meeting and Commissioner Krogman is the chair of that group now. Uh, the other, the other thing that we discussed that he didn't mention was tinting the window on the conference room next to the finance office. When people walk by that, they can see everybody in there and it's a little uncomfortable. So that's either, we're looking into, uh, the city thought maybe they had an extra window covering. If not, we're going to tint that window. And then we have some issues. For example, the stair rail is loose. And they're looking at a fix for that and working on other issues in the building. That same day, I went to, to the domestic abuse meeting. And we now have a Facebook page that I would urge you to like. It's Brookings Domestic Abuse is how you get to it. And in addition to that, we discussed a social media policy as well as preparing for the Walk a Mile that Stacy mentioned. The, our, I was very proud of the county in the last Walk a Mile because they raised quite a bit of money and of course, the commissioners were involved in the calendar pictures. It was pretty neat. On March 1st, I attended a Conservation Board Meeting that we were invited to. And it was very informative. It was a fun meeting. They really welcomed me with open arms. They were so glad to have a commissioner there. And, and they sent me some information that I will pass on to Stacy because I'd like to have it put in our next packet so you all can see some of their stats. But one that I found, two that I found extremely interesting was in the last 30 years, they've planted 1.1 million trees. That is a lot of trees. And they have planted 35,000 acres of grass. So if we think that our money isn't going for a good cause, I think we need to double think that. And I'll send you the stats of, of some of their other things that they do. And they, they are a hardworking group. On March 5th, I, like the rest of the commissioners, attended the annual township meeting. However, unlike some of the commissioners, three of us stayed. And once again, I had to be, we, we were the brunt of their firing up. And, but I have to say Commissioners Pierce and Jensen did an excellent job of helping. And, you know, I, I don't know that we put out any fires, but at least we were there taking the hit. Unlike our chairperson who should have been. March 6th, I attended the annual weed board meeting and Joel Ripley was introduced as the new weed board member and they did their normal things. Sheriff Marty always entertains both of those groups. And it was, it was a fun time. So that's all I have.
I've received a couple calls. Afton Township called me about the bridge posting south of White. They've had some increased truck traffic, of course, on some of their township roads. I'm sure it gets softer. The trucks probably won't be using their roads, hopefully, uh, going around. We'll just kind of, they're going to watch it and see how it goes. The Elton Mayor called, I believe he called Marty too. Elton, I guess, as the mayor was telling me, was promised two sets of, uh, control arms, one on the county road going south and the one on Main Street. The one on Main Street has been installed. There's concern over the road on the west side of town going south. There's been a couple accidents and I can't steer him towards Pier, a couple people in Pier with the railroad. And I don't, Marty, did you happen to go last night to this council meeting?
No, I didn't. I just, I just visited with the mayor before and he said it probably wasn't going to be that, you know, for me to come last night. One of the things though is I, I still can't find out how the, the signs changed because I visited with Dick and they were stop signs at that crossing and now they're yield signs. But it's not, they weren't replaced during our full county replacement, so.
Right.
The mayor said they didn't change them, so I don't know if the, I don't know why the railroad would change at the yield.
When they went to the new rail system, we installed, at that time, we installed stop... stop signs at all the crossings. Since that time, yield signs have been put at this inner, well, at the intersection, basically of the railroad track. We don't know who exactly put the yield signs out, but the recommendation at the time was to put stop signs at these crossings where there were some lights, and had issues. But that's all. See what comes out of that. Also, attended the drainage meeting. Bob kind of updated you on it. I believe it's going pretty well. Everybody agreed, kind of agrees, we're all on the same path, I guess, we're moving forward. Attended Townsend Township meeting, is well attended. I was, I guess I was kind of updated on the sign project within the county. I guess some of the townships are voicing some concern over the smaller culverts in their townships being marked. I guess more towards the haying of the ditches and stuff. They don't feel that the smaller culverts should be marked. That's something I told them they could take up with the engineer on the project, and they'll see what they can do about it. And we did have a little discussion about the area, but I think it went fine. The only other thing, I had the opportunity to judge the SDSU beauty pageant, and very talented individuals, I learned a lot that day.
And that is very hard work.
We started at 8 o'clock and got out of there at 5:30. Lot of interviews, and I'm very intelligent young lady, I'll tell you.
On March 3rd, I attended the annual Madera Township meeting, which was very interesting, and wanted to talk a little bit with them about what's going on with planning and zoning and our comp plan stuff. And I, I will tell you, I thought we'd be talking roads and bridges, but the people at that meeting wanted to talk drainage. Drainage is huge with Madera Township right now. On March 4th, we had a four-hour comprehensive plan meeting for planning and zoning, which was, was just excellent. We went through the home occupations and the extended home occupations, portions of our ordinances, and kind of came up with some ideas. And then, we spent the majority of our time talking about our ordinances on CAFOs, and what changes we maybe should be thinking about in, in that process. And it was just, just a really good meeting. On March 5th, I attended the township annual meeting with the rest of you. And on March 5th, we had our county planning and zoning meeting, and that meeting, we had a request for a conditional use permit. It was a renewal conditional use permit for a gravel pit that is east of town, and the prior owner had had a 10-year permit, and based on weed violations, dust violations, and some other things that they hadn't complied with in the conditional permit, planning and zoning, and, and you guys will, will all end up seeing that eventually, recommended a two-year permit to allow them to get into compliance with the 10-year requirements, and we'll, we'll be seeing that eventually. But we have a liquor license meeting, our small committee, scheduled for March 23rd, and we'll be going through that. I did receive quite a number of emails from people on House Bill 1201. And I think we owe a, a thank you to Representative Spence Holly, who on the floor of the House, it's my understanding, made, made an amendment to that bill to change from Shell to May, so that if Brookings County wants to keep our supermajority on planning and zoning for purposes of producing conditional, conditional use permits, we will be entitled to do that. The statute won't prevent us from keeping the supermajority. And then, I had several meetings and conversations with Abby on the, the legal paperwork for 34th Avenue, which is moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Drainage meeting with Larry, you already heard about that. The township meeting, the townships were warned that Ryan and I had to leave at 2:00, and Bob had to leave at 1:30. And if they wanted to hear from Bob, they were going to have to get, and we were promised to be first, and Bob had to leave. I had to leave because I went to a hazmat, or a tabletop exercise meeting with, conference call with Washington. So, I love to be there, but I am proud that you guys were able to pick it up and cover for us, and that's all I have. And so, I'd like to have a motion to executive session under South Dakota Code Law 1-25-2, Item 3, consulting with legal counsel. Also, for Item 1, discussing employee performance.
Second.
Moving second.
Stacy, will you go up to the legislative update and put that up on the screen for me, please?
We need a.
Would you go to the legislative update? I want to look at that again. Right.
Have to ask the guys in the back. I'm not running the computer.
Sorry.
We need a roll on the executive.
Sean, can you go to, I think it's under my report to the legislative, SDACC legislative update, right there, right? Right, one down, right there. There you go. And now, what did you, what were you looking for?
Okay, thank you. That's all I need.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
We need a roll, I think, on our.
Yes, 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 sorry.
Yep, no problem.
Miller.
I did that, aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Wyseth.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. There we go.